In case you had not heard, The Adam Boyer Show has been rebranded. We are now Fight and Revive with Adam Boyer. Things have changed on the channel, the channel information, the logo, the intros you're gonna see in just a moment. I am very excited about this, folks. And I want to just start off this episode. By the way, this is a great episode, so stick around. I highly encourage you to listen to the whole thing if you have time. If you're, you know, working, you can listen to it. Um, cause it's predominantly audio, so uh, that would be great. I really think you're gonna enjoy it. I'm interviewing Ann Parker, who is on the school board here in Campbell County in the Timberlake District. Such an interesting conversation. She has explained to us what they do on the school board. How, basically just how it runs. You're not gonna find this information in many places. She said she couldn't find it. She's on the school board. And so if you've ever thought about getting involved in local office, this is a great episode for you. Uh, and by the way, I will just say real quick, for the first about twenty minutes of the episode, I found out that our camera was not running. I don't know why, cause I'm pretty sure I started it. But um, apparently it was not still just be a graphic on the screen. The audio won't be quite as great from me. You'll hear her on the phone call, then I'll respond to her on the phone call as well. But um, it's about a fifteen minute interview, so for the first twenty minutes, it'll be like that. Then afterwards, it'll be back to normal with the good visual and audio quality. And so uh, yeah, thank you for watching. And I just want to say real quick, the goal of Fight and Revive, as you can tell, this is not a high budget show. This is very low budget, actually. And my goal is simple. I want to be different from other talk show hosts and radio show hosts in that, first of all, I want to touch on topics that other people will not touch on. You've seen me review Mark Dice's book. People don't like to talk about Mark Dice. Um, you know, a lot of people don't like uh, different positions to take, positions that should be taken, but especially on the big tech platforms, they're afraid of getting censored or whatever. And I want to be talking about those things. I want to bring these things to your attention. Stuff like, like Mark Dice has talked about, let's say something like the Bohemian Grove, you've probably not heard of. But stuff like that is very important. Stuff that's going on in Brussels with, that's not the UN, but stuff with the UN. Stuff like that. And there's just a lot of very important stuff that gets overlooked in the mainstream media. On the conservative side, obviously the liberal media intentionally ignores it. But on the conservative side, it just doesn't get talked about. And I want to talk about that. And number two, the main focus of this, of this show, and I want to speak genuinely here, is that, as I always try to do, is I want to, the reason I'm interviewing so many different local candidates, I've talked to Eric Zaire, who's running for House of Delegates. I've talked to Harrison Jones, who's on the Prince Edward Board of Supervisors. I've talked to a couple of different activists. I hope to talk to my uncle, as I've said about his new book. He's, has a very busy schedule. So I hope to have him on at some point. Today, I'm talking with Ann Parker on the school board. And the reason I do this is because I really do want y'all to be motivated and to see that you can get involved, to not have that helpless feeling, cause so often you do have that helpless feeling in politics. I can't do anything. And I don't want y'all to have that, because there are things you can do. And it's very important to me that y'all know this, and that's why I really hope this show is, is inspiring to y'all. And why I really hope it reaches a lot of people. And on that note, I'm not just, I did not just say all that to plug it. I really did want to explain that to y'all. But I thank you for supporting the show. I'm not asking you to donate or anything, but if you would subscribe to the channel and start helping us reach more people, that would be very, very much appreciated. And then even simple stuff that you may not think about often, like liking videos, commenting, it really does boost us in the algorithm and gets us in front of more people. The way YouTube works is it's kind of a snowball effect to where views get more views. So basically, a video gets five hundred views, YouTube might say, think, okay, so starting a little more traction. I'm gonna push this out to more people. Whereas if it's getting fifty views, it's gonna be mostly organic reach, which is good. But you want to get, boost up in the algorithm as well. So thank you, folks. I hope you are inspired. Let's get into an awesome episode. I really do hope you enjoy it, and I think you will. This is Fight and Revive with Adam Boyer. Let's get into it.
America is no longer one nation under God. Are you ready to fight for revival? Well, then you've come to the right place. Welcome to Fight and Revive with Adam Boyer.
Okay, folks, we're gonna jump right into the interview. I'm talking with Ann Parker. She serves the Campbell County School Board, or on the Campbell County School Board in the Timberlake District. She has since twenty twenty-one. So Ann, thank you for coming on the show. It's very much appreciated. I'm excited to talk to you.
Oh, I'm, it's an honor for, to be on your show. Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, thank you very much again for coming on, Ms. Parker. So um, basically, can you just give us a little bit of information? Just to start off about your background, um, just in general, maybe more specifically how you got involved into politics? And then what led you to run for the school board in twenty twenty-one?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Well, I was actually born in Washington DC. I was born in a home for wayward mothers and was adopted to my family in Fairfax County. Grew up there. I worked for Department of Army Navy Personnel Records and NASA when we were building a space station as a secretary. And then got into real estate, just kind of by default, as an executive secretary. I married a gentleman who was in the Navy and worked at the Pentagon, and he's from Lynchburg. So uh, when his term came up, he said, are we staying or are we going? And I had visited Lynchburg. I thought it was just awesome, laid back, definitely less concern uh, for safety issues. Loved seeing the mountains anytime we drove around. So uh, relocated to Lynchburg in nineteen ninety-four. At that time, I did have my oldest son, Joe, he would have been two at the time, and uh, have loved it ever since. So moved around a lot here, being a Realtor. I am in real estate by trade thirty-four years now. Um, I also have two other sons, and I have a, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five stepchildren. Um, and sixteen grandchildren. And I've had five boys in my home go through Campbell County schools and graduate from Brookville.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, so and ball and, and clubs and theater, a great, a variety of experiences there. Uh, one of my sons was on the spectrum and he started, in the autism spectrum, he started Yellow Branch pre-K. Um, for special ed, and then by kindergarten, he was regular ed with, you know, a few modifications. And then he's an honor student going to college, all kinds of great things. So I'm also familiar with, you know, the IEPs and five oh fours, so that, that's been a nice benefit to already have that information. But, you know, I was happy just selling real estate, and I would gravitate towards some boards and uh, at the state level and locally here with regards to real estate, you know, with the local association or the Virginia Association of Realtors. And the beginning of twenty-one happened, right? And everything just happened so fast, and I literally could visualize a steamroller going down my street. And I thought, and it wasn't actually happening, I just saw it in my head. I'm like, I cannot just stand by and watch this keep happening. So the things that really got me off the couch were, um, you know, we were being prepped, we were being prepped for the pandemic, plandemic, in my opinion. Um, we were being prepped for that. Then the George Floyd incident happened, which was just horribly uh, blown out of proportion. And, you know, to demonize our police officers, and it's, it was just so horrific, that whole, that whole part of twenty-one was just horrific. And then there was um, an agent at Smith Mountain Lake who was attacked at an open house. And if she hadn't trained in MMA, she wouldn't be with us here today. Um, bought my first gun after that, with the riots happening. Um, I also had been on the January sixth bus with the Bedford County militia. And I happened to be the person who they grabbed off the bus for the interview for WSET and the news in advance. And local folks who live in Lynchburg, well, live in Forest, Virginia, threatened to dismember me. Um, and actually now she's running for office, so uh, we can get into that in a moment.
Yeah, let's do it.
So uh, you gotta love it. So I was scared. I actually even put security on my house, because when they told me the faction, the left liberal faction of Antifa had just threatened everyone who'd been on the buses. It wasn't just me specifically. But they, they got our list, the list of people from the signup genius, so somebody infiltrated. And um, yeah, it was bad. So Caleb Mast out in Bedford, he uh, actually sued her. I can't remember, you know, what he sued her about, but she, she backed off. And um, it's very interesting.
Yeah, Caleb did that.
Yes, for sure. So I, and I was standing in my office at DeWitt Real Estate, and everybody's complaining, cause it was a horrible time. And I just looked at my boss and I said, you know, I, I try not to use any expletives. Um, I said a bad word. I said, this BS isn't getting us anywhere. This isn't helping, you know, we're just commiserating. I said, I've got to find a way to get involved. So I dug and dug, um, wow, no pun intended, and I finally found CCRC. I had to call the registrar's office to find the Campbell County Republican Committee. And she gave me Doug Behringer's number, and I called him and found out when the next meeting was. I attended the first meeting, um, that I also attended the first militia meeting that same month. That was in April of twenty twenty-one. I returned to the meeting, May of twenty twenty-one, the Republican Committee meeting, and they said, we need someone to run for school board in Timberlake, Russburg, and Brookmead. And so for anyone listening, I'm an example of it's never too late, okay? Because I didn't even know we had a school board.
Huh, wow.
Who, who tells you there is one? Nobody tells you there is one. Uh, I've had, you know, I'm a parent. I've been very involved with schools. They don't invite you. I mean, I could check it on the website and find out when the schedule is, and it was probably on flyers that came home when my older children were young. But, you know, you're busy with life and getting to ball games. So I was like, okay. I raised my hand and I said, I'll run if I'm in one of those districts, because I didn't even know what district I was in. It's by numbers on your voter registration card. It doesn't have the name of your district. Uh, no one had ever told me. I have lived in the Timberlake District. I'm sitting in my home right now, two thousand and four. And have never seen the word Timberlake District written on anything to this day.
Yeah, it's very hard about local boards and stuff. I think most people just assume if they're in the city, it's, you know, the mayor that takes care of it, or if they're in a county, they probably don't think about it. And if they do, they probably just think whoever we elect, like, you know, the Board of Supervisors or the Town Council just takes care of it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, even, you know, when I was door knocking too, no one knows. Um, uh, but it is really a shortfall. And of course, I get complaints sometimes, we don't need to teach it more in school. Well, guess what they did? The, the kids are in school. They don't care about the grown up stuff.
Right.
You know, all my children did mock um, general assemblies or mock, you know, uh, bill proposals and arguments and, you know, passing or vetoing, all of those. They, they did all of that. Um, they learned about the Electoral College. Um, but they, it, they really didn't learn what district they were in, obviously, because everyone in the classroom would probably be in a different district. But it is something that people have to seek out in order to learn it. And uh, I am working with our uh, Mr. Scott, who is like the rock star government teacher at Brookville High School. That all of my sons love to death. He's a great guy. Working with him to um, to teach, at least there, start there and see how it goes. Expose the, the seniors, at least in government, to the list of elected officials and the list of appointments that are available in Campbell County, and encourage them to get involved. So uh, we're also working, trying to figure out an event to try and grow the Political Science Club again, because with the shutdowns with COVID, everybody's rebuilding again. Folks just aren't interested in, in participating in things again. Um, so we're working on that. I'm thinking a dunk tank might get it done. Um, might have, might have people show up.
That could make some public.
Yeah, I mean, we're just figuring out, Mr. Scott would obviously have to be in it. Um, but he's a great guy. So, so yeah, uh, literally it was May twenty-seventh, either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, when I called Doug and just had, wanted to talk to my husband, who no idea what I was getting into. I had no idea what the time constraint was, didn't know if, I, I thought it was a volunteer position. I didn't even know I got paid. And oh man, it's a whopping three hundred and twenty-three dollars a month. I'm, I'm just, and people think I'm rich. Oh, you're in elected office and you got all the money. Yeah. It covers my cable bill. That's uh, that's basically what it covers. So uh, definitely not getting rich on the school board. But I, and I love the campaigning though. I know you saw me, uh, because I've marketed property and myself for thirty-four years. You know, I love it and I know how to make my own flyers and my own postcards and do the whole thing, the mailing lists and, you know, download from public records CSV files and all that fun stuff. So I just loved it. It was definitely, definitely my kind of thing. Um, I enjoyed meeting all of the people, and I had to get my signatures. Uh, of course, Rick uh, brought me fifty signatures. I didn't even ask him. It was very kind of him to donate fifty signatures for me.
He's very good, got some experience there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I'm, I wanted to make sure I had enough, so I only needed, I think, two fifty. I turned in six twenty-five. And I had, uh, let's see, so the twenty-eighth to June eighth. So I had eleven days.
A lot of people think it's, it, people that have looked, I know, because I, I've heard, you know, people looking to running into offices or something. I think one of the things, there's a lot of complications with it, oftentimes a lot of hoops you have to jump through to run for something. But one of the things people see, oh, I need a thousand signatures to run for this. How can I get a thousand signatures? One thing, my uncle Rick, who I, I've mentioned on the show before, he's told me before, he says, he can get, if he really puts his mind to it, he can get a thousand signatures in a good weekend. So I mean, it's, it, it, it takes some effort, like you were saying, you know, it's, you, you gotta make your mailing list and you gotta, you know, go door to door, especially you gotta really invest the time. But it is possible to do. It's not that big of a deal and that it's just something impossible.
Right, it absolutely isn't. Um, it is, it's just the time. It is scary. I did not want to door knock. I have sure as heck did not want to. But when you, you know, get in the right place before you walk up the driveway and realize, I, you know, I wasn't getting the signatures for me. I was getting the signatures to make sure that the evils we've seen infiltrate some school districts had not infiltrated Campbell. So, you know, I still had two in school. I've got grandkids coming up and I've got neighbors. You know, whenever anybody says, I don't have kids in the school, well, your tax dollars are going there. And for these things that are, could be happening, do you want your money going to that? And don't you care about your neighbor's children, you know?
I actually asked a friend, tell me that, that, that was one of the candidates that were, that was running for school board, uh, told him, cause, cause he was unmarried, and, and she, she told him, basically when he was confronting her about something, a candidate that had been running for it, and, and she told him, well, you don't have any kids in the, in the school system. He's like, well, yeah, well, I'm still paying for it, just as, as well as everybody else in the district. So that's actually kind of a good segue too. Um, because one of the things I, I'll say I wanted to focus on during the interview is basically how local politics works. And so this kind of multifaceted question. Could you tell us firstly, um, and I'll, I'll ask the first half of the question first. Could you tell us how it is, what it is specifically you do on the school board? And how you guys go about meeting and, you know, deciding policy and all like, all the stuff like that? Cause I know a lot of folks, including myself, you know, wonder, you know, okay, so you've run, you've actually gotten on the school board. Now what, what am I actually doing?
Right, absolutely. And you know what? I appreciate that you asked, because no one tells you beforehand. There, we really are, our whole political party system is broken, in my humble opinion. It was never really built. I mean, I'm just blown away, honestly. Uh, as a secretary who used to type SOP, standard operating procedures for the military, if someone was in a job and they dropped dead, for lack of a better phrase, or moved, how about moved? Then someone could sit in that desk and open that standard operating procedure binder and do absolutely everything that that person did. So, you know, like you did an outline for this interview before we started. Why in the world is there not, I mean, people in our, and this is across the Commonwealth, I haven't really got out nationally, but even across the Commonwealth, none of our parties even have a list of the duties for the offices. Well, how often they meet, how often they have to work, how much they pay. I mean, you can look some of that up, obviously, online. But um, so we're recruiting and getting behind and trying to elect people to an office that they know nothing about. Not just the candidate, but the party itself. Um, so I'm seeing a whole bunch of holes in our shift and working to do some plugging up on that. So I appreciate you asking. I had no idea going in. Um, I'm very thankful to a gentleman, a gentleman named Melvin Adams. A lot of grassroots organizations and nonprofits provided me the training that I felt helped me get, hit the ground running prior to being elected. And I went to everything I could go to, every webinar, every Zoom on CRT, on transgender, on, you know, the big hot topic issues, but also uh, Melvin Adams, who started Noah Webster Education Foundation. He has wonderful resources of what the school board does on his website. And I share that with any of the candidates that I see, you know, here or across the Commonwealth. Because he puts it right in a nutshell. Truly, the school board is made up of elected officials in Campbell. Some are still appointed to represent the citizens of Campbell County and to be sure that we have policies in place to ensure that our children have a safe, uninterrupted, successful education experience and are prepared to be contributing members of society when they graduate high school. So that's kind of the overarching, you know, political statement, I guess. And that's not an exact verbatim. I just kind of came up with that on the fly, but that's kind of a good overall, um, you know, in a small and concise package. But when, when we have our meetings, we are approving the work, disproving, questioning, whatever uh, comes up at the time. The work that the folks that we hire to work full-time every day are doing. Such as, you know, personnel reports with hires, fires, retirements, layoffs, things like that. Budget, we go over the budget every month. There, obviously we have a lot of expenses. Um, we also have a lot of money coming in, you know, between grants and donations and other things as well. Uh, discipline, if discipline goes over, if somebody has an incident where our discipline team feels they need more than ten days of suspension, they come before us. Um, with recommendations from our staff, and we speak to, if they show up, they don't have to always show up, but we do speak to the, to the student and to the parents. We ask questions. We ask, uh, I'll tell you, the guys on the board with me, the things that I had been told about them are not true. They are not true. These, those gentlemen fight so hard for these children to make sure that they're not left behind, or that they fall into that, you know, hole between social services and a successful child, you know, because there are a lot of holes in between those two things. And they fight really, really hard um, to get those kids the services they need, even if it's, you know, referrals for DSS or CPS or um, Medicaid, SNAP. If they need any of those types of benefits and they haven't already been provided, then they, we make sure that that's all, they, they've got every possible resource that we can give them. Um, and, and it's a whole, as a whole, for the whole community. It's not just the school board, obviously, mentioned the other organizations, and there's many more. So I was very impressed um, once I got to know everybody there. So other things, the policy really is our main job. Our school board policy is the main job of the school board. This does not include the Human Resources Division of Hiring and Firing. So a lot of people think that the school board reviews applications and interviews employees. We do not do that. We hire and fire the superintendent who then hires and fires. And it's like a trickle down, almost like a pyramid, you know, or, or a flow chart. Then he hires the assistant super and the head of personnel, the director of transportation, and, you know, some of the other head positions. Um, nutrition, and then they hire, it goes all down that, that uh, flow chart. So Ms. Hunley is our personnel director, so she is the person who reads all of the inter, reads all of the uh, resumes and hires and fires our teachers. But it also goes through our principals. So actually Amy is kind, Ms. Hunley is kind of right parallel to our principal. So I'll use the high school that's closest to me, where my children have gone and is in my actual district, Brookville High School. Christine White is the principal. So she actually will start the preliminary interview process. And then if she feels like they'd be a good fit, then she, they go forward to Ms. Hunley for background checks and all that fun stuff. So, you know, my, my interpretation too of the school board was completely different before I was on it. So we, we focused basically on the policies, you know, that do include things like access to the internet. It does have some personnel on there. I'll tell you, I've been so impressed with Campbell, because every time that I ask him about things, you know, we did do the anti-CRT resolution, Luke, you know, the beginning of twenty twenty-two. But we didn't need it. Uh, our policy already had in three different locations that no religious or political indoctrination was to be taught in our schools. So as Dr. Johnson said to me once, he said, Ann, all of this has come before. Just not all at once and not so, you know, in our face. So Campbell, I'll give you another example, Luke, of how Campbell was ahead of things. Not knowing that the Satanic Temple was gonna try and show up, right?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah, when that happened in JF, and, and it was just such a great experience in twenty twenty-one. I, I, uh, the, through the militias, because I'm a member of Campbell County, I was told to get in contact with Mayor Catherine Bennett, who's incredible. And there was just a group, five families, just super active, trying to start filling, plugging in candidates for school board. And as you know, they got two um, two write-in candidates elected, conservative, just fathers, who didn't even know, they didn't know what the school board was doing either. And it's fabulous. So they have a conservative majority there as well. So during that campaigning process, um, and I just lost my train of thought. It happens when you're fifty-seven.
It happens to me and I'm seventeen, so.
Yeah, I got you.
Well, I, I, I can help you get uh, back on track with uh, another question, which kind of ties in with what you're talking about now. But um, so one of the things that I just find interesting, cause uh, basically, how do you want to see, uh, or I should ask, what do you want to see changed about the way the Campbell County school system is run? And what policy changes or whatever, you know, any sort of change do you want to see implemented? Cause you've been, you know, very complimentary. I, I do know, I feel like Campbell has a pretty decent school system. I'm not in it, so you know, I can't uh, confirm or deny. But um, what, if anything, would you like to see with what you can do on the school board? Is there anything specific? What goals do you have that you'd like to see?
Yeah, great question. And I actually hold that thought, because I remembered it was the Satanic Temple that we were talking about.
Yes.
And when I got off track onto the elections, I couldn't remember where I was. So when that happened, when, actually first when the drag show uh, was over at JF, that was the first time I jumped into the policy and looked at clubs and looked at um, rental of our facilities. And we had pretty comprehensive language already there to prevent anything that would not, and this is the, the phrase that I use, is, does not align with Campbell County values. So we were in pretty good shape. And I'll tell you what's in there for clubs is, there are no clubs except for middle school and high school, okay? So we, so the babies are safe, for sure, and elementary school for many of that. The facilities rental, and again, this is from things that happened in the past. And to be honest with you, it was a religious organization, from what I was told, that was kind of abusing the property, you know, by, you know, renting too often, too many people. I guess they weren't taking good care of it while they were there. So our policy will not allow weekly rentals or monthly rentals. And anyone who would like to use our space, there's, you know, a comprehensive application. But if it's a group or an organization, their headquarters or main office, I think, are the actual words, have to be located in the county or within five miles of the school. And that's because of like Russburg, I mean, uh, Brookville right here being on the line of the city, right? Um, so Satanic Temple's main office is in Salem, Massachusetts. So they not, aren't even in, uh, they're not even, it's not worth them even applying to rent our space, because they would not be approved. And we don't have to get in that argument about freedom of religion and things like that. So now, things that we have done since I've gotten on the board was, you know, SR six fifty, actually, I'm gonna probably get the number wrong now. I think it's SR six fifty-six was the sexually explicit materials.
If that number's wrong, I won't hold you to it, don't worry.
Hmm?
I said, if that number's wrong, I won't hold you to it, don't worry.
Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah, I actually went, sponsored a bunch of bills last year, so sometimes they get lost in my noggin. So I'm pretty sure it's six fifty-six, and, but it only addressed, this came from Richmond General Assembly, it only addressed curriculum. Well, first, I'm just shocked. I mean, you know, sexually explicit materials in curriculum, seriously? I mean, you know, sexually explicit materials in curriculum, seriously?
Yeah.
And people just adopted it and, you know, told their, the members of the public that, you know, it's all good. Well, it wasn't all good. It was just the curriculum. So, uh, I proposed and we did pass it that we actually reference other language. So there's a lot of language in our policy under curriculum that addresses how the sexually, if there's sexually explicit material and the definition by Virginia Code and all those fun things are under our curriculum, uh, section. And it does say, parents have to be, all, the whole thing. Parents have to have thirty days advance notice. They have to opt out if they don't want their child to be exposed to this. We have to give them supplemental material. It has never happened to date. Um, you know, we haven't had anybody, you know, even back, Bobby was, uh, Dr. Johnson was the super for fourteen years and, uh, no one ever found anything sexually explicit in material, you know, or ever complained about the curriculum materials. So I add, had them add in the clubs because that's how these bad guys are getting to our kids.
Yeah.
Um, of course, electronic devices are first. Um, and then the clubs were second. They would have like an innocuous club and then they'd bring in a speaker and then start asking people if they think they were born in the right bodies or whatever. It's just a mess. So we added it into the clubs. We added into supplemental material, which is where the teachers can bring in extra, you know, workbooks or assign a book to read, things like that, that aren't, you know, necessarily curriculum, but they're supposed to enhance. We already have a policy, it's any supplemental material is supposed to enhance the, the lesson of that time of, of class. So we added it there and to clubs and to facilities management. And it has a line that says, please refer to code, um, blah, 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 for, um, for information on, uh, our policy on sexually explicit materials. So we also, because, you know, everyone was finding all these library books, right? I mean, and my goodness, it's horrible. Absolutely horrific.
Yeah, there was. Going on over in, uh, mathematics, and all the things, real quick, for those viewers sake, I'm sure you know about it, but, um, uh, in mathematics, which is a neighboring county to Campbell County where we are, um, there was, uh, night, a lot of members, especially the mathematics militia and, uh, members of the community speaking out, because there was some very explicit material found in the mathematics library. There was a protest play out they had there. And this was the first, the mathematics, I believe it was the board of supervisors that heard about it. Board supervisor, you correct me if I'm mistaken.
You're correct. Town council, I think it's called.
Town council, okay. That would make sense. But it was one of those governing bodies, um, whether it be mathematics county or the town. And that was the first they heard about it. And they voted three to two on the spot to fire the library board. And, uh, the way it worked was, the three members that voted for it, they fired that person that was in their district with the board, or on the library board. The two people that voted against it, their people on the library board stayed. And as it pointed out, um, the people that voted against that, we now know who needs to be, uh, running in the next general election. So, uh, yeah, that was on mathematics. It's a very real, real issue, but I'll let you back to what you're saying now.
Yeah, it is very real. And actually, on twenty twenty-one, while I was campaigning, you know, and, uh, the, the folks in Bedford and I became very, super close. I got some great relationships there. But one of the moms walked into the library on two twenty-one inside Bedford County and, and I don't know, I don't remember if it was June or not, but most likely it was. And she, uh, confronted the head librarian and they said, you know, no, we're, I'm not, you know, not going to change this display. So she checked out all the books. So no one else could have access to them.
That's what I'm like.
Which I thought was brilliant. I mean, that's just brilliant. Um, and I know that Bedford, the, I know some of the folks on the board that they've been, you know, addressing, making comments to, I don't think they've actually done any policies, Luke, you know, when we're in, just like being on the board. It's almost more of influence than control, if that makes sense. You know, we don't want to over-regulate everything. Um, but we want to make sure there's not holes where evil can sneak in or things that would harm, you know, our community. So I'm not sure how that all played out, but I do know from talking to a couple of the Bedford Board of Supervisors that, you know, they're going to make sure that their librarians know that this isn't, it isn't acceptable to have it be right in the, when you open the front door on display.
Right.
For, for children to see. So, um, crazy.
Shifting focus a little bit, um, we're running a little bit short on time, so I'm going to go ahead and move it along. Um, so one of the things that's been happening as far as elections go, obviously, Virginia off-year elections, we get, you know, we have elections every year. This year, we have the House, the Senate, and a lot of various, um, races. There's at least, uh, one school board race in the Spring Hill District. There might be more, um, I'm not sure about that. There's board of supervisors races, uh, the Spring Hill District's the one I've been watching closely. And there is, I believe, two independents officially and a Republican running for that one. Uh, I know basically who they are. I'm not exactly sure how the, um, uh, I, I know someone won the Republican nomination. Someone else is running as an independent, uh, the incumbent heavily is an independent, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and so that's just one example of one of the, some of the races that are going on. And this is just something I'm interested in as to how you distinguish, because I imagine at, at the very least, if not explicitly asked for, you're probably, um, expected or, you know, some people are probably looking at your campaigns and maybe asking you for an endorsement or will you support me or will you work for me? You know, this candidate asked for this, and, you know, they want to get an incumbent on the, already on the school board to endorse them, to help, you know, um, you know, help their chances in the general election. So if asked about that or if the situation should arise, I don't know if it has for you personally, but whether, um, or not it does, how would you differentiate between someone who really is a real conservative, who we know aligns with our values, both in Campbell County and those of true conservatism, like you've been talking about, and someone who's kind of pretending to be one? I can have some specific people in mind who I won't name, but it happens frequently where someone, you know, they run as this, you know, hard right, you know, reform everything candidate, and then it turns out they're really more of a center-right, center-left character, not really a real conservative at all. So in that scenario, how would you go about, what would you say are some of the signs of differentiating between someone who's genuine and someone who's not?
Yeah, that's a tough question. Um, and I'm going to hurt some people's feelings here, but not at the local level. But when Daniel Gade was running for Senate.
Yeah, I remember that.
At the state senate, and he was a veteran, I was so excited and I, he's appeared strong and committed. And then he didn't win. And I guess if, if you have a conservative audience, everyone knows that, uh, election was fraudulent. And, uh, he didn't even challenge it. He didn't even ask for a recount. He didn't challenge it. That's just to me, um, I know that people tell candidates not to. I don't see why, if I think something went wrong, I'm going to question it.
Yep.
And then I met him at an event for, uh, when he was speaking for, on behalf of, uh, I don't think Glenn was there, but I know Winsome was there and Jason was there at a, a fundraiser down in Clarksville for veterans. And it was a fifth district fundraiser for campaigning in twenty twenty-one. And he got to the podium and instead of being proud of serving our country, he was kind of a whiner and my husband, I was so looking forward to meeting him, Luke, I was so disappointed. And my husband's like, oh, there he is over there. You want to go get your picture? I'm like, I have no interest in getting a picture with that man. You know, I'm just so disappointed. And he didn't win for a reason. Um, but just like me though, you know, I didn't know if I was, I mean, I knew I would give it all I had, but I don't know if I was, you know, and how do you know that you're going to be good at a job you don't know anything about? Right? So I do give a lot of people grace, Luke, I'll tell you straight up. Um, all of us should be going and visiting, and so I'm inviting your, your, your listeners to go to the General Assembly this year when it's in session and actually watch a couple subcommittees of your delegates speaking up and presenting bills, defending bills, asking questions about bills and, you know, talk to them in their offices, of course. But I have grace for absolutely every single elected official at this point. And, you know, I've even apologized to a couple that I bought, I, I drank the Kool-Aid of they went to Richmond and didn't do anything, because that's what the people who live here think. Well, they haven't been there to see what it's like. I mean, I'm blown away at how hard they fight and how hard. So I appreciate you bringing up the, the state elections because that is serious. That is way more serious. I know local absolutely is important, but the entire General Assembly is up for vote this year. Every single member of the House, every single member of the Senate, and almost everyone was redistricted, almost everyone was redistricted and now has to convince new voters that they did a good job. Well, I, I watched a bunch this year. Like I said, I supported some bills and I'm involved with the Medical Freedom Organization called Virginia Medical Freedom Alliance. If you guys want to check that out, we're doing some really awesome stuff. And, um, when I watched the Senate Health and Education Subcommittee and Amanda Chase, Senator Chase, Senator Mark Peake, our senator, both had versions of banning transgender surgeries for either eighteen and under or twenty-one and under. They're not even listening because it was coming from Republicans and it was a Democrat-controlled Senate and every subcommittee was stacked with Democrats.
Yep.
They wouldn't even listen. So it's not that they didn't get anything done because they didn't try or they didn't work as hard as they could. It, it really is partisan and a lot of folks, a lot of organizations that have been paying attention way longer than my measly two years, uh, are saying that last year was the most partisan voting they have ever seen in Virginia.
Wow.
So when you talk about division, that's what's happening. And that's what's happening at the federal level too. Look how hard Bob is fighting. But everything dies in the Senate because it's Democrat-controlled. So, um, we really need to focus on that. So, but locally, locally, we have three districts up and when our districts come up, they are always the school board and board of supervisors at the same time. So the Sunburst District, which is Leon and Steve Shockley, Leon is running for reelection. Steve is actually stepping down. And then we've got Spring Hill. So, uh, school board is Mark Epperson, he's our current chair. He is running for reelection. Kristen Vaughn is the candidate who received the Republican Committee endorsement. And Jackie Mendez is also running for that seat. The board of supervisor in Spring Hill is Kenny Brown, incumbent, is running for reelection. And Tommy Vaughn is, has challenged him and received the endorsement from the Republican Party. Now, your uncle brought a gentleman named Mr. Chocolate to, apparently, he did get his signatures in in time. It was like a last weekend ditch effort and, you know, he got it in in time. And he is running against Leon and Sunburst, but I have, I don't know him. And I believe there's a third party, uh, and I don't have the information on that one. Regarding if they reach out to me, honestly, at this point, I am happy to share all of the successes and failures that I had while I was campaigning to help anyone who asks me with their campaign. But so far, it's not that I don't feel strongly about anyone, but I don't, I don't see anybody right now that I have enough information for, to endorse personally, because I do want to be really careful with that. And, and that's one of those things is when we endorse and we vet, um, I think we really need to have a lot more robust system.
Yeah, I think endorsements definitely get thrown around a lot.
Yeah, but, and I have spoken to, to a lot of the folks that I just mentioned, either before they were running and encouraged them to run, wink, wink, or, um, or, you know, tried to give them some tips on, you know, talking to members of our party and having a platform. And like I said, more than anything to help other candidates is to tell them what my failures were so they don't waste their time on certain things that I did that didn't work.
Okay.
So, and then locally, we have the sheriff. We also have some offices that are up, uh, and the professor's office. It's going to be a big ticket item. Mark Peake is our senator now, of course, and then Zaire is running against Ferris. And I don't remember the Democrat opposers' name for the delegate seat.
Kimberly Moran. That's, uh, Kimberly Moran. Yeah, I, we got redistricted this year into, uh, what would be Eric Zaire's district if he wins, and we're now in Mark, uh, Mark Peake's district. So I'm, I'm excited about that. So I've got about five minutes or so here to wrap up. So real quickly, um, last couple of questions. First of all, um, what, are there any specific races? It can be around the entire state, it could be nationally, but, um, more specifically local races, but any race in particular whatsoever that you're watching, keeping a close eye on?
Uh, yes, sir. Actually, I, there's only one specifically is Suterline in, out in the Roanoke Valley. He is Republican. I don't know if he's the hardcore conservative that we would like, but he did vote. Uh, I've had a couple of people give me some things that they don't feel he voted correctly on. But that area is so heavily Democrat out there. And then the redistricting apparently, you know, really crushed, uh, put him in, you know, a really competitive area. And Ty Turner, who's here, is our local representative for Americans for Prosperity, has recognized that he needs help out there. So I will be door knocking in Roanoke for, um, Suterline to hold his seat in the Senate because, oh my gosh, we can't lose a seat in the Senate. We need to win four more.
So that's a, you're saying that's a Senate seat?
So those are the numbers. We need to hold the people who are currently Republican senators, um, if they're running for reelection. And I don't know the whole Commonwealth, but then we, we need to, we need to actually win four Senate seats across the Commonwealth. But I do plan on, um, getting more information. I'm really close to Nelson Perez now. He ended up being on a committee for another, uh, nonprofit with me, and he is the head of the Virginia Tea Party. And they just put together their, you know, quote-unquote, report card, so to speak. And I'll be seeing him, uh, on a Zoom call on Tuesday night to get more information on the other close calls or where we absolutely need to win back a seat. And I'm going to put a plug in for Phil Hamilton, who is running against Craig Deeds. And it's for your Amherst listeners, Nelson County listeners, Charlottesville, all that fun stuff. Um, it would be very difficult for Phil to win as a Republican in that district, but I appreciate his optimism and I'm doing whatever I can to help him. He has, he just called me earlier today about a couple of events and I'll see him Monday. Uh, we're going to Charlottesville, a bunch of us, to sit in the courtroom, um, with regards to, um, some firings that happened, uh, over not taking the vaccine and their, anyway, some, some cool stuff going on. People are winning and things are getting turned around. But Phil Hamilton, I don't remember the number of his district off him, I want to say eleventh, but I don't want to get that wrong, but against Craig Deeds. So if any of your listeners are in Amherst or Nelson or know people who may not vote normally, you know, a lot of people only vote in presidential elections.
Yeah, that's very true.
So if we can get those other people off their butts and, into the polls and to vote, um, he could really have a shot at it. And to flip that part of Virginia would be incredible.
Anytime there's a Republican running around Charlottesville, it's going to be a tough battle.
And it, and it's kind of like my best friend who is in Leesburg now, she lives down here, she just moved down here last year, is it's more the fear factor that's keeping conservatives out of the polling locations. It's not, it's not that they don't want to vote and it's not that they don't want a conservative in, they just don't want anyone to see them go and vote. It's just amazing. The, the bullying that the left does is just out of, out of control.
Yeah, that's something I, I don't quite understand. So wrapping up here, up against the clock, got about three minutes. Um, so real quick, this is, this is just kind of a fun question, answer, as you will. But obviously, all eyes on twenty twenty-four, the presidential election. Um, who are you, I don't, you may not have a preferred candidate right now, I don't know. Do you have a preferred candidate in the twenty twenty-four Republican primary right now? If so, would you mind sharing who it is? And if not, I mean, you still look at the, all the options and then, uh, who do you, who would you like to see the nominee? And, uh, who do you think will be the Republican nominee?
Not a problem at all. My president, Donald J. Trump. Donald Trump is my president. He always will be my president. Uh, I actually am trying to have him do a, I'm calling it a pit stop, a patriot pit stop in Virginia before November to rally our base.
That would be cool.
His team has told me, the people that I know that are like one handshake away from the team. So if you know any contacts, let me know. Um, I've talked to people in different organizations all around the Commonwealth and it's, it's kind of like everything else. Everyone's like, that's a great idea. I'm like, okay, would, would you mind doing it? Because I'm really busy. And they're like, no, but if you get it rolling, I'll help you, right? So.
Yeah, all I've got to get someone to start it.
When I found out from a few people that did work on his When I found out from a few people that did work on his campaign before, that his schedule is just booked right now, right? Between now and November, because he is going all over the country and he's focusing on the battleground states. And I understand that. Um, but I do think that whoever his advisors are, are missing the mark by not advising him to visit, have a full-blown rally in Virginia. Because just imagine, if we do flip the Senate and hold the House, we will be one hundred percent red in Richmond.
Crazy. That'd be pretty, pretty crazy.
And so if we are red in Richmond, then he's got, it's cakewalk for him. And we're one of the first states that's called on television. And then the Midwest and the West Coast is looking. And if they say, see, we're red and we're voting Trump, then, um, you know, I don't think they can, I don't think the Democrats can outvote the cheat. And that's what the Republicans need to do is outvote the cheat. But, so I'm proposing this, Luke, to your listeners. Anybody who might know, you know, somebody at Eric's Vineyard, you know, in Charlottesville and can get to Dad. Um, I'm gonna be sending invitations. I'm gonna be printing them out, asking people to mail them. Gonna put on an online petition. I'll share all of that with you when I finally have it up and running. I just finished a whole text campaign for my medical freedom to try and let parents, young parents, know that the childhood vaccines get, schedule is, is, uh, there are waivers and exemptions. It's not, you know, you don't absolutely have to. You, you have options. So I was really busy on that last week. But, um, I'm gonna, my invitation to President Trump is to take a twenty-minute pit stop, Patriot pit stop at one of the airports in Virginia and just help rally the troops so that we can take back the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Well, right now, uh, that, that, I will say, right, right now, I'm a, I'm a DeSantis guy, but I, I do think that'd be pretty cool to see, to see Trump here. And that's maybe something I'll have to have you back on and we can discuss. I've done a lot of talking about that. So right now, we're out of time. Ms. Parker, thank you so much for coming on the show. This has been super interesting. And I'm hoping it's kind of given the viewers a, you know, kind of a light into some of the goings-on, like what actually happens with the school board, a real-life example of it. I know every county is gonna be different, but every county, every city to an extent. But that's some, uh, basics of it right there. So thank you for coming on very much. It has been an absolute pleasure and, uh, hope to talk to you again very soon.
Absolutely. I really appreciate the opportunity and I think it's great that you're getting out there. And hopefully you have a lot of young listeners. We could really use them at, in our party, in the Republican Party.
Very true. Thank you again. Thank you, everyone, for watching slash listening to that interview. Very much appreciated. I do hope you enjoyed it. I definitely think you probably did, especially if you're watching right now at the end. Anne Parker, I mean, man, so interesting to talk to. And I hope to have her back on. There's a, so much stuff we didn't touch. She was telling me about her stuff, um, after we were off the interview. She was telling me about her stuff involved with getting information to young parents about exemptions they can fail to, uh, take their kids out of, uh, getting vaccines and stuff. And, ooh, what a sensitive topic. That's another one a lot of conservatives won't discuss, as I was talking about at the top of the show, about vaccines, not just the vaccine. I don't know if we're allowed to say that on Facebook, so I'll kind of disguise the way I say it. How should I say it? Should I kind of mutter it like that? Or the, uh, Ovid K. Axine Vay? There's, there's a lot of different stuff we can do. Go the JP Sears route, maybe. But thank you, folks, for watching. I do hope you enjoyed. Uh, there should be a button, if I remember to put it in, to subscribe. Again, we very much appreciate if you did that. Um, there should be a playlist to all the Adam Boyer Show interviews. And of course, don't forget to check out everything on the channel. Hey, also, there is, for the first time ever, I forgot to mention this earlier, the show Facebook page up and running. It is on Facebook now. There should be a link for that in the description or on the channel banner, different links around the channel. You can go like and follow the show Facebook, Fight and Revive with Adam Boyer. Go check us out there. Thank you, folks, for watching. As always, I'm Adam Boyer. I'm signing off for now. I will see y'all next week, or who knows, maybe a little bit before. Check out the YouTube cha, channel, stay up to date. Got lots of shorts coming out, YouTube shorts. I like to make those. They get lots of views, reach more people.